All right, good morning. We will call to order the special meeting of the Waco City Council at 9:00 a.m., March 24th. Joining me online today are Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Bearfield, Councilmember Hector Sabido, Councilmember John Kennard, Councilmember Dylan Meek, and Councilmember Jim Holmes. So all council members are present. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. On March 16th, 2020, the governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. The change was effective March 16th, 2020, until further notice or until the state disaster declaration expires. In accordance with social distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, the Waco City Council meeting will not be open to the public. This meeting is being broadcast live at www.wcccctv.tv. The audio is being recorded and the recording will be available to the public. According to the Attorney General, statutes may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however that governmental bodies offer alternative methods of communicating with their public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow as much possible public input, those who wish to submit their written comments on a listed agenda were asked to submit their comments to the city secretary by 8:00 p.m. on March 23rd, 2020. That was yesterday. At this time, the city secretary, Esmeralda Hudson, will read into the record the comments submitted to the city secretary by 8:00 p.m. Monday, March 23rd, 2020.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we had 15 cards that were received before 8:00 p.m. on March 23rd, 2020, and I'll read them, their name and their comment. First one is from Zhajia Jin. "I am glad that Waco has taken measures in response to COVID-19 and allowed for restaurants to continue with to-go orders and deliveries. I co-own Waco Shaw Chaw, and I'm requesting that if there is a shelter-in-place order to allow for restaurants and food trucks like our own to continue, at least with deliveries. Many local small businesses have already had to lay off many staff. We are able to stay afloat if we could no longer operate, but we too would have to lay off all our team. We would like to, we would like future declarations and revisions to include specific guidelines on food trucks and what we should do as well. Please ensure guidelines are specifically detailed to all types of food and beverage industry establishment, not just bars and restaurants. In addition to the city, the city can provide any type of mortgage reduction, relief, or suspension, please consider those policies as landlords may not be able to reduce rent due to needing to pay, still pay mortgages. Thankfully, our Waco Shaw storefront has reduced rent due to a gracious landlord, but because of COVID-19, we have not been able to open our first storefront as we had planned to within this month. Thank you for your work. Please consider the small businesses during this time." Second comment from Carmen Sines. "Given that the global academic, social distancing, community-acquired case in Waco, the age many over 70 of our election workers, the difficulty in keeping people six feet apart, multiple people needing to use the same touchscreen, asymptomatic people being some of the worst disease vectors, and the rule of no gathering of more than 10 people, the only responsible thing for the council to do is to postpone the May 2nd, 2020 city election to November. Please do not put the citizens of Waco at further risk." Kelly Callaway. "I am an independent contractor as a stylist, facial technician. I don't value my business over people's health. I am again asking that you help us all temporary close salons and spas." Travis Hip. "The May election needs to be postponed, and the November election needs to allow for mail-in ballots for everyone." Jocelyn Angelo. "Please make sure to close hair and nail salons and any other nonessential businesses that require touching customers." Christian Ratu. "Waco supermarkets and stores need to make people stay six feet apart even when querying at the register. Ideally, supermarkets would not let more than 1 to 15 people in at the same time and would make sure that people stay six feet apart when in line. They would also alternate closed and open registers so that people in separate lines are not too close to each other." Sarah Nazirian. "Please continue and consider increasing strict restrictions to keep our city safe. More curfews, shelter-in-place, whatever possible to control and delay this pandemic." Bethany Brown. "I support restricting public interaction to help lessen the spread of coronavirus in Waco. Too many people are still going out unnecessarily." Christian John Peck. "Will you be declaring whether or not to postpone the May 2nd election until November? The county elections office said that they need to know by Thursday, 3/26 on behalf of LWV Waco." A concerned citizen. "You have workers all over the city having to work in buildings in close contact with other coworkers. These businesses will not shut their doors and have staff work remotely where possible unless forced to do so. Employees don't dare stay home for fear of being fired even though they are, they value their safety and the possible contamination they may bring home. Do the right thing, enact a shelter-in-place since our governor won't." Colin Cocker. "Overall, I support the decision to close many of the industries, institutions addressed in the initial declaration. However, I am asking that if this is extended, that we exclude gyms from the list. I think that continuing this is unnecessary since gyms have ample square footage, social distancing, low turnout, frequently less than 10 or 50, and we are frequented by very health-conscious individuals. I think that we should be allowed to try and keep our bodies and minds healthy during this unprecedented period. The city council decision to keep the gyms closed is impeding on many of our citizens to keep their body and mind healthy and has having a detrimental effect on our overall welfare." Alyssa Baker. "Need to take disabled mother groceries. I live in Waco but need to travel till they'll need. How do I get permission to do that? If worse comes to worse, I can stay in my car. My mom stay in my car at my mom's because I don't want to go inside just in case I am sick and don't know it. Please help." Alan Northcutt. "The COVID-19 pandemic is expected to be a health emergency lasting for months or even years. Therefore, I would like to make comments about the virus within the big picture of city operations and human health. First, COVID-19 is a zoonosis in which an infectious agent jumps from an animal species to man. In fact, 65% of new emerging diseases are protected by zoonosis or projected to be zoonosis, and as the planet warms, animals are forced to migrate to find an appropriate temperature, often bringing them into contact with humans and increasing the risk of the spread to man. This is one of the many ways the climate crisis threatens human health. As the medical journal Lancet has stated, anthropogenic climate change is the biggest global health threat of the 21st century. Second, the selection of all renewable energy for the city's 2020 energy contract was a very positive step that will help combat the climate crisis. And third, and the third point is a practical matter. With the anticipated federal stimulus package, funds for projects that will promote financial recovery and green economy are expected. Thus, I strongly recommend the city use all of these available funds to move forward a decarbonization and improving citizen health. Thank you." Zhajia Jin. "I am very concerned with Mission Waco's request, urgent Instagram video stating that the city does not have a plan should the homeless in our city need to be quarantined due to COVID-19. The city needs to provide funding to organizations like Mission Waco and shelters to provide them with safe quarantining, safe if they contract COVID-19. This is a public health issue. Please consider the plans tomorrow at the meeting on how to protect the homeless during this time when they have no safe home to return to, return to, or shelter at." That is all, Mayor.
Okay. Appreciate, appreciate those comments. We will now begin our work session. The first item is Work Session 2020-213, Discussion of Latest Information on Coronavirus Disease 2019. We'll ask Dr. Brenda Gray to make a presentation. Dr. Gray is the Director of the Waco-McClennan County Public Health District. She will be joining us shortly.
Thank you for joining us.
Good morning.
Council members are on the screen and ready, ready to hear from you.
Good morning to each of you. So the, so we want to present four of the most important updates for COVID-19 that we feel will be beneficial for you to have in your conversation so that the decisions you make can be well informed by the Public Health District as well as the CDC guidance. So as of today, we have 24 cases. We received a report that four new cases tested positive as of 8:30 this morning, and we're continuing to do investigations. So it was too early for us to find out the details about the gender, the age, and the specifics, other specifics about those cases. One of the things I want to talk to you about today is the incidence rate, and I want to talk to you about why that's important. So our senior epidemiologist and I had a conversation yesterday afternoon, and I wanted her to pull the data on what our rate looked like compared to counties with similar populations and counties with larger populations. So in terms of the four counties we looked at, McLennan County, Brazos, excuse me, I'm a little bit out of breath, Jefferson and Smith, all those counties have about a quarter of a million population. But with the exception of Jefferson County's, County, McLennan County rate almost doubles the other two counties. So our county is 7.8, Jefferson, I mean Brazos is 5.9, and Smith County is 4.3. Now, the exception there is Jefferson County. Their rate almost triples ours. Theirs is 21.6. But when we look at relative-sized counties, we're still not doing really well when it comes to rate of this virus, the incidence of this virus. But we, when we compare ourselves to much larger counties, which is Harris County, Travis, Bexar, and Dallas, our rate exceeds all of those. So our rate, again, is 7.86, and in order of Harris County, theirs is 1.1, Travis is 6.3, Bexar is 2.8, and Dallas is 4.9. Now, the largest of those counties is Harris County, and their rate is 1.5. There, there, we have 254,000 people, they have 4.6 million people, and their rate is 1.1. So that shows the disparity in the way, the rate or the incidence which this county is contracting this virus. So to me, that's a very salient point for you guys to consider. And of course, the, the regular things that we talk about, the symptoms, I think everybody's familiar with that right now, fever, cough, shortness of breath, flu-like symptoms, and for those who are over 65 and with underlying health conditions, your risk is increased. And then our other message is what can you do to protect yourselves? Stay at home if you're sick, wash your hands, certainly practice of social distancing, and comply with the shelter-in-place order.
Okay, I don't, do you have, do you have more?
No, that's it.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll take questions. Appreciate that initial presentation. First person I see is Jim Holmes, Councilmember Holmes.
Um, I don't, are there, I'm trying, I don't know the, all the, are there going to be other presentations about the healthcare aspect of this, or is this, is this it? I'm just trying to figure out where I want to bring in my global question.
I think this is the time to, to do that.
Okay, okay. Um, and then, okay, I'm just trying to think here. As we enter this healthcare situation, I just want to make sure that we're thinking about also on top of the, the resolution we're talking about today, about improving, really four things that I want to talk about with Dr. Gray, maybe the healthcare, or advisors in general. Dr. Gray, as well as Senator Baylor Scott White, at Waco Family Health Center. I know we're getting guidance from these guys, and this is why we're doing this resolution in a relatively rapid manner and accelerated fashion here. I don't want to make sure that the overall population knows that we're depending on these guys and we're taking their advice seriously. Four things, again, I have about, about these in general is, as we go into it again, is improving our testing capacity. I know we don't have enough tests right now, and we're really only testing those with evident symptoms. And so I know that the, that some of the data that we're getting skewed a little bit because we're only, again, testing the ones that have the symptoms, so the population, the test sample maybe will skew. I'm not defending, I'm just saying let's make an effort to get as many tests as we can to get people tested. The second thing, and I appreciate what Dr. Gray said about the more susceptible portions of the population, what we can do about those folks that are over 70, with their immunity systems aren't quite as robust as the rest of the population. So I want to be thinking about what we do there too as we go through this process. The third thing, emergency healthcare infrastructure, and I think it's important that we isolate the infected, so hospital beds prospectively are going to be an important thing to be thinking about as we go through this. Ventilators, surgical masks, that sort of thing. And I know we're getting into some detail here, but this is the kind of thing that I think we need to be thinking about as, as the governing entity here in the city. The last thing that I have here is just the data gathering. And as we go through the resolution, I will be asking more questions about that in, in the appropriate section. But as we've kind of become the cutting edge here in Waco as far as doing this, the situation here, shelter-in-place, I'd also like to be on the cutting edge of getting better and more data. So in a week, two, two weeks, and we look at this again, that we are looking at the best possible data that we can. And that's not just, I see the two items that were mandated in there, and I know we'll go through when we talk about the resolution. But I'm thinking total tests, positives, negatives, pending, who's hospitalized, what are the fatalities, what are community spread cases, what is a possible source of the contagion, gender, age, let's get as much as we can, and this is an emergency situation. So I think that we, as we're asking businesses to close, I think we owe that to the, to the business community and the citizen in general to be gathering as much information as we possibly can. I know there's some limitations, but let's go to that limitation. Again, this is an emergency. So that, those are my observations on the, I guess, the medical situation. Again, I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up in the agenda, but that's, that's just some of my comments. Thanks.
I think those are all very good points, Jim, and, and we will certainly do everything we can to gather the best data possible. There are, as you mentioned, some limitations on that, but we will, we will get it to, to the greatest extent that we, that we possibly can. And I see that Councilmember Sabido has a question or a comment.
Good morning. Dr. Gray, thank you so much for your presentation. As always, I do appreciate the data that you provide and, and the, for us to really get a feel for where our county and our city is at, sometimes I think we are bombarded with so much information that things might appear worse than what they really are. So I do appreciate the information that you're providing. I do want to piggyback a little bit off of what Councilmember Holmes said about just the data that we are putting out to the public, making sure that we are being proactive. I have to agree that, you know, if we are asking certain businesses to close, if we're asking certain businesses to temporarily suspend their operations, that we do owe it to them to really give them the data. That way they can see the complexity and the severity of this case. This is an emergency case, and I think that anything that we can do as far as transparency on our end or, or even just to make sure that that information is disseminated to all of our, all of our community would be very beneficial. I think that would answer a lot of questions and even put a, put a silence to maybe some of the rumors that are out there because as we all know, when there's an emergency crisis, rumors tend to, rumors tend to create themselves and, and tend to get larger as the week and the day progress. And so I just think that'll just help maybe put our city at ease. So I do want to thank you for the information that has been provided thus far, and I appreciate the all-hands-on-deck effort that is taking place by the Health District. But one question that I do want to talk about is, it may be, and I don't know if you can share this yet, but maybe some ideas. I have heard some concerns about our homeless population and what are we doing to protect them? Obviously, it's a very important population in our community, and so I don't know if maybe you've seen ideas around other communities or counties, Dr. Gray, that the way that they're serving their homeless population.
So that's a great question, and we are just beginning to have that discussion with Galen Price and Margaret Coward, who is my Public Health Nursing Manager, to see what the best practices are. And we're just at the very cursory phase of that conversation. But as soon as we have some more information, we are going to be sharing that with certainly Galen Price and housing and supporting that through the Public Health District as well as the EOC Operations.
Thank you. And I, and I know you thought about this, but you know, we do have a lot of great nonprofits that we have in our community that we're very fortunate to have in our community, and I think they're willing and ready to help. And so I think creating a good partnership with them, even stronger than what we have right now, would be beneficial. And I think, once again, an all-hands-on-deck approach is, is going to be the solution to this for, for our community.
Councilmember Sabido, I've asked Assistant City Manager Dieter Emerson to, to address this also from, from a different standpoint.
Wonderful.
And so as you all are familiar, that we have, we house the homeless coalition continuum of care position within our organization, and as of last week, the homeless coalition has appointed Nicole Wiscombe as their point of contact to work between that group as well as the city. And so we are working with our homeless providers to, in, in order to work with them and identify what the needs are, and asking them to provide us some solutions that we can work with them to get implemented.
Wonderful, thank you. And I knew staff was working on it. I do appreciate how proactive staff has been and our city leadership, and so I just really want to take this opportunity to just say thank you for all of your hard work. I know many of you are working long, long hours, and, and so I just want to thank you really for, for just making this a priority and, and just moving forward with it and keeping council informed. And of course, I, I do want to take this opportunity and I'll be quiet after this. Mayor, thank you so much for your leadership. I know it has not been easy, and I know that you have put in very long hours, and so I just want to say thank you so much for, for your leadership during this time in, in our community.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Sabido, and I appreciate you thanking the staff. They, they really are working extraordinarily hard to, to figure out how to keep our city running and also how to deal with this, this health crisis. And getting back for just a minute to, to the data that Councilmember Holmes was, was asking for, I mean, I think that is critically important to see what's happening in our county. One of the things I think is really important too, though, is to look at what's happening in the states that are a little bit farther ahead in the progression than we are, because you can see sort of a prediction of what's coming here if we, if we don't take action, and fortunately, we have taken action. And I appreciate the support that I've gotten from all of you on that. I think we all feel the weight of what this is causing for our business, for our businesses, their employees, and just our citizens in general. And so we need to be prepared to lift this order when the time comes, but I don't want us to be unrealistic about the fact that this is, it's going to take a while, and, and the date that we have in this resolution is not the date by which I think we'll be able to lift it. And there are going to be strong, loud political voices calling for us to lift this order before it's, before it is safe to do so. And so we're going to have to be prepared for that. I saw our Lieutenant Governor last night suggesting that this might only take a few days or a week, and that's just completely irresponsible when you consider what, what we know and what we are hearing from our, from our health experts and from our hospital networks. So the data is challenging, but we, we, the data is improving as well. And hopefully, by, by the time we revisit this, assuming we, we pass this resolution, which I don't want to assume, hopefully by the time we get to that point, we will have better data. So I see Councilmember Meek has his hand raised.
Uh, Dr. Gray, I just had a question on test, uh, the number of tests. Would you, in a perfect world, would there be more tests in McLennan County right now or easier testing opportunities?
That's a good question, and it's, it's a question that we are addressing and facing every day, and absolutely, we would need more testing. But we still will have specific guidelines. We want people that have symptoms to be tested because, because of the lack of testing, we want, don't want to expend tests for people who don't have symptoms. And we want to be able to verify that if they have the, the COVID-19, that we can count that in the numbers of positive versus just using tests to rule out if a person doesn't have it.
Is there anything that we can do to get more tests into the community? I know there's a national shortage, but anything that we can do that we can control to get more tests?
Not directly. So the hospital systems and the, what is springing up now are the private labs that are testing, which the hospitals are shepherding those tests to those labs. The Public Health District role is that, is when they have a test that is done from the state dishes, that we facilitate the transport of that test, and then we're, of course, a reporting mechanism for those mandated reporting infectious diseases. But because our Public Health District does not do testing, we, we don't have a stake in really, other than through advocacy, to get more tests for the ground level that's here. But we, because we, if we were a testing site, we could actually advocate for testing, but we don't test, we just facilitate testing being done.
Sure, thank you. I want to commend city staff for their good work on improving communication. I think that we've really seen a, a lot of good, robust communication on multiple platforms online, so I appreciate that. One thing, one thing that I think would be helpful, and I don't know how to disseminate this information, is kind of the why, the why we are moving forward with our shelter-in-place. I, personally, I was on a call with Glenn Robinson, the CEO of Hillcrest, and I found his talking points incredibly insightful regarding the need for us to move, make this move based on data from previous jurisdictions and hospital beds, and that so much of this goes back to hospital beds and making sure that our community continues to have that. There's been some other good articles that, that I've seen that are, that to Holmes's point, are very data-driven. And I, I've been the beneficiary, and I think other council members have been the beneficiary of either doing our own homework or talking to people that are experts in their field or both. So it's easy for us to kind of get there, but I think that I can, I'm quick to forget that some people aren't eat, sleep, and breathing the same way that, that we are and might not have the data and information that we've been given access to. So I think it'd be worthwhile to consider, how do we communicate a data-driven why behind the what? And that might have been what other council members have said this morning, but I, I think, you know, posting, whether it's articles or, you know, requests or quotes from our own hospital administrators, I think that could be helpful potentially for citizens to know why exactly is this necessary versus, you know, why is a shelter-in-place better than just some mitigation or some social distancing? And I think that the articles and data I've read make it clear to me this is the right move, but I think it might be helpful for some of our citizens to see that too. So I think continuing to, to explain that would be important and why, why from a health perspective, we're taking these aggressive measures. And on the note of communication, and I don't know if this is the time to talk about this, I do think good, a good explanation of the order would be helpful in making sure that we're communicating exactly what it means. I think there's a lot of people that, which is to be, you know, unsurprising, it, it's not surprising, but I think that we just need to really proactively communicate what does this order mean, what can you do, what can't you do, and just continue, continue to really work hard to do that. Again, I, I, we're doing a great job, and this is moving very quickly, but I think that that's a good next step for us to take.
Thank you, Councilmember Meek. Couple of comments on that. One, I, I agree. I think our, our staff has done a remarkable job of getting up to speed on communications in a time that, you know, that people forget how fast this is changing, and it has spun up in a, just, not overnight, but in, in just a few days, and it's, it's really a, a challenge to deal with it. But I think our staff is doing a good job, and I, I appreciate what you're asking for because I think that will help people understand. I will say that we have been developing a very extensive FAQ, and I know we had staff here until late last night, because I got it late last night, as, as a draft, and that will be hitting the website if it hasn't already. Has it hit the website yet?
No, we, we have one more favor.
Okay, so we've got a little more work to do on that, but that will help answer a lot of the questions about the order itself in terms of what businesses it affects, what you can do, what you shouldn't do, what you can't do. And that, that should be helpful, and I would encourage the, the public, as always, to go to our website, waco-texas.com, to find the very latest information that we have both on the coronavirus, COVID-19, and also on the things that they need to know about how to deal with that. And then to your other point about hearing from the hos, the hospital leaders, the healthcare network leaders, as well as our own infectious disease expert, Dr. Werner and Dr. Gray, one of the key things, probably the key limiting factor is going to be ventilators. And even if we can increase hospital beds, which they are taking measures like canceling elective surgery, elective procedures to do, there still will be a shortage of ventilators. And, you know, people need ventilators for all sorts of things, not just COVID-19. So a person has pneumonia and can't get on a ventilator if they are in, that's in serious trouble, then, then, you know, they may not make it. And so it's that shortage of, of ventilators as well as personal protection equipment and hospital beds that is the, is the real crisis here. And we've got, these steps that we've taken are aimed at flattening the curve to make that more controllable by our healthcare providers when they, when these cases come in. So just wanted to add that on to, to what you said, and I think trying to get that message out to the public in a more comprehensive way is, is really important. So I will call now on Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Bearfield.
Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning. Um, thank you, uh, Mayor and city staff for everything that you've done. Thank you, Dr. Gray. You and your team in the Health District have been monumental in keeping us informed and moving during this time. Um, thank you, Mayor, for mentioning the ventilators. That was one of the notes that I had made because that is, um, the information coming from our health experts is really the driving force of why, you know, you made the decision and why we support your decision in the stay in place. Um, I was hoping for, one of the things you said yesterday during the press conference that, I mean, you know, Councilmember Meek said his conversation with Glenn Robinson kind of shifted his perspective. Mine was, um, the information that Dr. Gray reiterated this morning about the various counties of our size and then the larger counties in perspective to where we are per capita on number of confirmed cases. And I think that's something that once made plain, you know, because it, it caused me to pause. So I know that's one of the things that I think could, could lead in a, getting people to an understanding of, um, of what, what's going on. Um, I thank the city, um, county, uh, city Assistant City Manager Emerson in leading communications. The infographics are great. They're very helpful because it is, yes, you know, we read, you know, the, the declaration in entirety and the ordinance's entirety, but you know, in general, um, people may get past the tense whereas and, and lose some of the translation. So I think the infographics is one of the more helpful pieces of communication tools that we've been using. Um, I wanted to also, um, uh, thank you all for a, a, addressing, from a health perspective, some of the, um, the key issues that we've been dealing with. I know one of the cards is mentioning the homelessness. And so, you know, thankful for, for the things that have been happening. But, um, I wanted to go back to my last question to Dr. Gray, um, regarding the test. And I think we talked about it, but I wanted to make sure you, we, from the private lab, we get positive results, but is that the only information we get from private labs?
Uh, I'll, I'll have to defer, excuse me, that one to Vetehe, um, about what information she gets from the private labs.
Yes, we get only the, um, positive results from the private labs right now.
We're asking for negative results as well, but, but, uh, so far we haven't been able to, to get those consistently. We're going to continue to work on that, but we're not sure whether we'll be able to get those.
Is that not, well, I mean, is that something that the order could mandate?
I think there's a question about whether we can legally require those. Um, I'll let, uh, I'll, I'll let, uh, our city attorney Jennifer Ritchie speak to that. We did have a discussion about that.
Um, in consultation, in consultation with the Health District, um, it was decided, uh, when, um, and the mayor, it was decided when, when the mayor entered his order that the two pieces of information that all parties were comfortable in asking for were the positives and the number of tests. And that's for both legal reasons and for health, um, Health District reasons.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, uh, Mayor Protem? Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll call on, uh, Councilmember Canard, please.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, I, again, I just echo what my colleagues have said. I appreciate the work that we've done so far. This has been, I think this kind of caught us all by surprise how quickly it really sort of escalated. And, um, and also just the sharing of the data and the numbers and putting a, uh, kind of a real, the just, the, the tangibleness of our per capita impact and that, that we are kind of ahead, not a good way, of many other communities across the, across the state. And, uh, the justification and reasoning for what we're doing. I'm, I'm thankful and looking forward to, uh, the fact that, I know, I know we all have received a lot of questions from our businesses in terms of what's allowable, what is not, how, how this order looks. Um, and so as the quicker we can kind of get that out, not only from, from our side, but also I think from the, the Health District side, that the county's order too. So I know they mirror each other. Uh, I'm not sure if they're exactly right, but they mirror each other. I just want to make sure that the Health District specifically has the county's order online and is showing, uh, that for our, our county partners as well. And that, that we know that this is not just a, while, while we as the city council is taking action, the county has too, and that our partners and other entities, uh, outside of our jurisdiction, uh, need to be complying as well because it's kind of an all-in-one deck. Uh, the only other thing I'd add at this point to what everybody has, has said is that when it, while the numbers are still, I don't know, I guess, accessible or somewhat low, are we doing anything to verify compliance quarantine-wise, to help them track down those that they have exposed, been exposed to? Um, it, I, I know kind of the cat's sore out of the bag at this point, but is there anything that we can do epidemiologically to provide additional support for those that have tested positive at this point?
So, uh, the answer is yes, and I'm going to let Vetehe provide more details. And one of the things with the ELC being stood up, it allows us to expand our ability to be able to do contract, uh, tracing as well as person-to-person, uh, the, the monitoring that we need to do. But I'll let her give you specifics on it.
So with all of our confirmed cases, as soon as we have, um, a case report, we do an investigation. What includes in the investigation is first, we try to figure out how they may have got it. So we get the symptom on, oh.
I'm sorry, it's, it's, and, and they're listening to you here, so it's confusing, but the, but the public is listening to you there. So just, if you can just try to speak up a little bit.
Okay. So, uh, once we get a positive case, we ask them first of all, what their symptom onset was. 14 days before the symptom onset, we ask them what their, um, if they traveled somewhere, if they went to work, if they came in contact with somebody who had COVID-19. So that way we try to figure out if this is completely travel-related or if it is community spread. Initially, we did have a couple of cases where the entire 14 days they were outside or they were traveling. So it was easy to say that, yes, this is travel-related. But now we're seeing more and more cases where they may have gone out of town maybe for one day or two days, and the rest of the time they were here. So there's no way to pinpoint whether it is travel or it's community spread. It's just not possible right now. So that's one part of the investigation. The next part is we ask them what they did after their symptom onset. That's when they're considered contagious. So if they went to work, if they came in contact with any of their friends, did they go out for dinner somewhere? Um, how many household members do they have? So everybody in the household is asked to isolate. We give them these instructions verbally and then we send them written instructions as well. And then if we classify somebody as a direct contact, let's say they worked with them for the entire day, then they come under our high-risk contacts. So we monitor them for 14 days for their symptoms. So we give them instructions, look out for these symptoms. And somebody from the Health District is calling them every day to ask them how they're doing and what their symptoms are. And if they are symptomatic, then we arrange for testing for them right now.
That's really helpful, Vetehe. Vetehe, thank you for that clarification.
Clarify that he's arranged for testing.
Yes. So when I say arrange for testing, it is what we're doing right now. Let's say a family member is having symptoms. So we are asking them to call their healthcare provider and try to go to the same lab that they used for the confirmed case. So we have consistency there. And then let's say there's a direct contact. We still ask them to call their healthcare provider, tell them you've spoken to the Health District and you need to be tested. If their healthcare provider doesn't have a commercial lab that they're using or capability to test them, then the Health District will coordinate. So we, they will collect the samples and we can send the samples to the state lab. So that's what the Health District does there.
So I hope that kind of clears up some of the confusion of people think we can test. We just.
Just a second. I'm sorry. Go, no, no, fit, say that, say that one more time. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just want to be sure we don't get away before, uh, Councilmember Canard may have further questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear there. I think there's a general perception the Health District does some testing, but we facilitate testing. And so that's why I think we get questions about testing, but that's not our role to actually do the testing, but we facilitate that happening and getting that sample to the state.
Yeah. And I think that's a very good point, that we are, the Health District is the convenor and collaborator to kind of just kind of quarterback and marshal the resources that the, our health system is currently providing. And, and to that point, you know, Vetehe mentioned that, um, we ask them to call their provider and if they have symptoms that, for the provider to provide tests. Can you talk through, for those in our community who don't have a primary healthcare provider, uh, what, who do they call, what resources are there for them? How, we do not want them going to the emergency room. Uh, we don't want them just showing up at, at a clinic unannounced if, if they think they're, are providing symptoms with this, with, uh, COVID. Um, so, so what, who, where do they call and how do they access the system for those that don't have a primary care provider?
So that's a great question. So part of the leadership, the, the Leadership Response Team was to really figure out what that process looked like. And we're, so part of the re, the Leadership Response Team, the McClanahan County Leadership Response Team, was to figure out what that process looks like. And so we're always, the, the, the hospital systems, the public health system, and the community health system has agreed that we, we, we direct people to the website first. Uh, provide, if they don't have a provider, each of those individuals have agreed collectively to see patients, whether or not they had health insurance. And so our first step is to get them to the, the online assessment, then get them connected to one of those systems. Uh, health insurance will not be a, should, should not be a barrier for them getting tested or getting the care that they need. So each of the, the, the hospital systems and the Community Health Center, and in addition to the Public Health Center, will refer people to the websites, to their 24-hour hotline to get them connected to that initial online assessment, and then connect to a provider at one of those systems. And then, uh, based on what that assessment or evaluation is, then they will determine if they get a test or not.
Okay. And, and so that assessment is on our website or is it on the individual healthcare provider's website?
To date, I know that the Family Health Center has it on their website. I believe the other hospital systems do, but I've actually seen the one on the Family Health Center website that allows a patient to go through that online assessment and get connected to a provider if that evaluation deems they need to be connected.
Councilmember, we are working to ensure that we have links to those websites on our respective page as well, so that we can make sure that it's a one-stop place.
Good. And, and for those of our citizens that don't have access to the web for whatever reason, there's a 24-hour hotline they can call that can help to direct them to a resource?
Yes.
Can we give them that? Do, do we have that number? Or can we get?
So the, so the general line for the public to have questions about COVID-19 is two, uh, two-five-four?
Seven-five-zero.
Seven-five-zero, one-eight-nine-zero.
So again, two-five-four, seven-five-zero, one-eight-nine-zero is the, is the call, is the, is the first stop.
Very good. All right. Thank you, thank you guys again for, uh, all your work.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Canard, uh, Mayor Protem Bearfield, and then I believe, uh, Councilmember Meek will be next.
Sorry, I forgot to lower my hand from the left.
All right. All right. Councilmember Meek and then Councilmember Sabido after that.
Just, just quickly back on again, um, hospital beds and ventilators. One, um, one of the things that I've also heard on that subject is that social distancing by itself, these kind of mitigation efforts of just drive-through restaurants only has been ineffective in other parts of the world when they've tried that. And it really took the full-scale shelter in place for them to flatten the curve. And again, I don't, I don't want to be dead horse here and keep reiterating that, but when we're taking aggressive measures to close business at this extent we are, I think that that's an important point, is that the data that I've seen shows that that, that is the necessary measure. So that, that's all I wanted to say. Oh, and I also wanted to say, I saw Jim drinking from a convention center mug, and I wanted to compliment him for his product placement.
Nice, nice. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Meek. You're right. That is an important point. And, uh, I'd like for us to try to develop, uh, sort of a, a one-pageer on what, uh, what drove that decision. I think that would be helpful to the, to our citizens. Uh, Councilmember Sabido.
Yes, uh, thank you so much, Mayor. Uh, one of the things that, uh, Councilmember Canard mentioned that really got me thinking was about the hotline. Uh, Dr. Gray, Assistant City Manager Deirdre, are we, or do we have the availability or the capability to make sure that we have bilingual people on the hotline to ensure that, uh, everyone can be communicated to in their preferred language?
So actually, Councilmember Sabido, that is a measure that I thought about this morning that we need to make sure because we, um, in addition to the mayor releasing the order on yesterday, we have, are fielding a number of calls, uh, specifically to the, the new order. And so we, that's a piece that we're, we're going to be working on today to make sure that we can get that addressed.
Wonderful thinking. I do appreciate the efforts that have gone forth on behalf of city staff, um, from our public information office to ensure that things are translated into Spanish. Um, uh, you know, I think it's, it's very, I think we have discussed the importance of making sure that, uh, everyone can understand the ordinances that are being put in place, the, the ways to get help, uh, the ways to know how to gather information. And so what staff has done over the past couple of days to ensure that it is done not only in English, but in Spanish as well is, is, I appreciate that so much. Uh, and as we move forward, I know that that's going to be top of mind as well, making sure that all of the measures that we take, all of the initiatives that we take, whether we're providing stories, whether we're providing health tips, whether we're providing hotline, et cetera, that they are being done in Spanish as well. So that way, uh, all of our community can understand what, what's being put out. Thank you.
Very good point. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sabido. Okay, I don't see anybody else's hands raised. Uh, Councilmember Holmes.
Yeah. Um, I, I didn't have mine raised yet. I just wanted to close my comments on this, on the issue. And again, thanks, Dr. Gray, for, for the report and all the, all the, you know, the folks that are reporting. But, uh, again, I appreciate the guidance we're getting from, uh, the healthcare professionals. Um, and again, I want to, I want to express my appreciation to the mayor, Mayor Dever. Thanks for leading the charge on this. I know it's not easy. And the city manager and city staff and everybody in the city, I want to, I want, I appreciate that. Um, you know, we're having to make some difficult decisions here today. And, uh, I really want to express my appreciation to small businesses in Waco because we're making the difficult decisions with their, the small business are bearing the brunt of the sacrifices. And, uh, I want to assure them that these measures are temporary or in emergency only. Uh, and, you know, we'll come out on the other side of it stronger. As Mayor, as you said yesterday, I think we'll come out on the other side of it stronger. And, uh, I also want to know, work with your local banker. I know we've got a great banking community here in Waco that, uh, and the one that I work with and all, all the banks are, uh, we're listening to the issues. You know, we're listening to the, the problems. And, uh, I think the banks will be very cooperative in, in, uh, in circumstances that render. Uh, so call them and, and, and see what you can do, uh, if and as the thing is extended. And, uh, there are also federal programs out there too, the SBA and Treasury for payroll issues. But I'll just say we're listening and we're learning as we go here. But I, but my big appreciation here is to the small businesses in Waco. Uh, and I also want to just do a shout-out for the early movers here. I think the chambers have been, uh, the African-American Chamber, the Greater Waco Chamber, and the Hispanic Chamber, Alfred and John and Matt have done a pretty good job of getting this, their website sort of up to speed and very responsive and very interactive and some FAQs and, um, and help there. So I appreciate that, uh, element of, of what we're seeing from our chambers. Um, and then just citizens in general. Like I've said this before, that I get a lot of calls here in the last few days, but I'd say over half of them are with, with the comment, how can I help? How can I help get to this? And I see in the trip today, people are making masks voluntarily. People are, are, are really attuned to what we're trying to do here. So I just want to be focusing on the volunteers and, and early movers here and as we go through this, but really the small businesses in Waco. Uh, I appreciate the sacrifices they're making here.
Very well said, Councilmember Holmes. Uh, it is, is, they are certainly feeling the impact, as are their employees. And, um, it's, uh, we will not continue this beyond the point that we think it's necessary, but, uh, I just, I, I just don't want to have people feel, uh, I want people to have realistic expectations of, of the fact that this probably is going to go beyond April 7th. Um, and your, your comments, uh, regarding working with your bank, with your lender, uh, I totally agree with. Um, and I want to point out that we've got a great mix of, um, of, of business people on this council. And, you know, this is, this is something that we all understand and feel. And, uh, you know, I know Councilmember Bearfield in particular, uh, Mayor Protem Bearfield, uh, is certainly connected with the social aspects of this that are, and, and the pain that this is causing, uh, not just in, uh, not just in the business world. So we are certainly not taking this lightly. Uh, it is a heavy weight, um, but it is a, uh, it is our responsibility to, to, to do the, the right thing here. So, uh, and, and your comments, uh, Councilmember Holmes, about the business community will lead really well into our, our next discussion item. Uh, but I want to be sure we've got everybody else, uh, taken care of here that wanted to make comments. Any other comments? Okay. Uh, we have one item that we need to pause for. We had one comment that wasn't fully, uh, read into the record, and I'll ask, uh, our city secretary, Esmeralda Hudson, to, to read that in now.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. This is, uh, continued from Zha Zha Shan, which would be included in her three minutes. I am for the, I am for the continued discussion and response to the city of the COVID-19 public health impact. However, I am against any continued dismissal by the Public Health District of concerns regarding pending cases. Whoever is a social media manager of the Facebook Waco McClanahan Public Health District page needs to formally apologize for what they said on 3/18, 10:38 a.m. on Facebook. page needs to formally apologize for what they said on 3/18, 10:38 a.m. on Facebook." They said that the rumor mill is very active in McClanahan County, but rest assured, as of 10:30 a.m. on 3/16/2020, there are no confirmed cases in McClanahan County. The statement by the official city Facebook page, public health page that was shared 658 times, according to the Facebook as of this morning, gave false reassurance to residents in Waco and the county by saying, "Rest assured, we have zero cases." When asked how many pending tests or total tests to date there were, no response was given. The Public Health District then 24 hours later reported of the various positive cases in Waco exactly the next day. They knew about this prior to posting 3/16, yet they discuss, dismissed rumor mills or more like whistleblowers, Facebook posts about the reality of positive COVID-19 cases going on with McClanahan County days and potentially a week prior. Waco can do better than this. I am asking and demanding for professionalism through and through from here on out, and as a citizen, want a formal apology issued on the Facebook page by the Public Health District for falsely misguided citizens." And that is it, Mayor.
Okay. Um, am I allowed to respond to that?
Yes.
In this, in this setting? Uh, we will look into that allegation. I can tell you that, uh, everything that I have seen from the Health District has been nothing but completely professional and, uh, caring for nothing more than the health and welfare of our community. And so I, uh, have a real, have real doubts about whether there was a, an intentional misstatement there. I, I have a feeling that this was a timing issue, and, uh, the timing on these cases has been challenging, and when we receive, uh, information, uh, is, is, it just varies throughout the day. And so, uh, we, but we will definitely check into that and be sure that there was not something inappropriate done there. I appreciate the concern. All right. Uh, Work Session 2020-216. This is the discussion of the creation of community work teams to mitigate the impact and long-term impacts, the immediate and long-term impacts of COVID-19. Uh, I'm really, uh, pleased to announce this morning, uh, the formation of these four, uh, collaborative working teams, each of which will be led by a council member and an outside expert, uh, in the field. Um, and let me just go through them real quickly. Uh, the first is Business and Indi, Business and Individual Financial Recovery, led by Councilmember Jim Holmes and Sarah Roberts, who is the president of the Waco Business League and is a, uh, can, independent consultant for business and economic development. Uh, second is Strategic Communication, uh, which is Hector Sabido, uh, co-chaired by, uh, Natalie Kalinsky, who is a communication expert with the Waco Foundation. Um, the third is Health Response and Coordination, chaired by Councilmember John Kennard, uh, and Dr. Jackson Griggs, who is the head of the Waco Family Health Center. Uh, both Jackson and, uh, John serve on the McClanahan County Leadership Response Team. Very, uh, pleased about that. And, uh, the, the fourth, uh, team is Social Services and Education Assistance, led by Mayor Protem Andrea Bearfield, uh, along with Susie Painter-March, who is the president and CEO of Prosper Waco. Um, the point of all of these, uh, teams is to provide a method to facilitate communications about issues and opportunities that are related to COVID-19 impacts in each of the working areas, to help us engage our community partners to address these issues and opportunities, and to provide better leadership and communication to these important issues as we work through the crisis and toward recovery. Um, I've asked Dylan not to serve on one of these teams, but to assist me directly, uh, as we work through this crisis. Um, we have, uh, city staff liaisons that are appointed to, um, each of these teams. I hope they know by now. Uh, I'm not announcing something that they don't know. Okay. Uh, so, uh, working with, uh, Councilmember Holmes and Sarah Roberts will be Milet Harrison. Uh, working with, uh, Councilmember Sabido and Natalie Kalinsky will be Larry Holsey. Uh, working with Councilmember Kennard and Jackson Griggs will be Dr. Brenda Gray. And, uh, working with, uh, Count, Mayor Protem, uh, Bearfield and Susie Painter-March will be Galen Price. And, uh, we have identified key work partners, uh, such as for the Business and Individual Financial Recovery, uh, the Greater Waco Chamber, the Central Texas African-American Chamber, Syntex Hispanic Chamber, Startup Waco, the Texas Workforce Commission, and others, as they want to join us and we can engage them. Uh, each one of these teams has, has identified key partners. Um, but, you know, I, I want you all as, uh, as co-leaders of these teams to reach out to whomever you feel necessary to, uh, because we, we certainly haven't identified all of the, all of the key work partners, and you are in a better position to do that than, than we are. We've also identified a number of key issues that we think are important, but again, I want, uh, to, to lean on you as leaders in our community to, to identify what those key issues are and to, uh, to take these things and run with them. Um, you know, and I also want to emphasize that, uh, where these, these teams, these working teams are not designed to create silos. They're, they're designed to create leadership and communication. Uh, certainly, you each have ideas about other aspects of this, and I want you to communicate, uh, with each other and with me, uh, and Dylan. And when you, if you have things that you need city resources for, please contact the city manager's office and copy me on it, and, um, you know, we'll try to respond as, as appropriate. The main, uh, one, one of the, one of the key things that we're trying to do here is get things that are more appropriate for community partners to deal with than for the city government to deal with, moved out to those city, uh, partners and, uh, and, um, then communicated back and forth. Uh, there's already a lot of great work going on, such as the McClanahan County Leadership Response Team, uh, that John has been working on, and, uh, uh, the, the, the key nonprofits have already started gathering together, so I, I think, um, uh, for Mayor Protem Bearfield, that's, that work has certainly begun. Um, and I know that you all are already connected to a lot of that, that trying to facilitate two-way communication between those, the things that are being done in the city is really, really important. Um, and I want to give, uh, Bradley Ford a minute, if he, if he would like to comment on, on any of this. He, he spent a lot of time, uh, working on this, thinking about it, and it's been a kind of a collaboration, uh, to be sure. But I wanted to, to see if I've left anything out that, that Bradley wanted to mention.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I won't speak long. I'll just say that, you know, when we, when we start hearing from the community ideas, good ideas that need to be worked, um, you might often hear, "Well, the city should do this." Uh, I, I don't know how many times I've heard that yet during this situation. And what we recognize as a council and city manager's office is that really no one person or organization can really respond to this situation alone. Um, we need each other to pull together, and we need each other to contribute to the solutions and discussions. And so I'm excited to see what ideas come out of these work teams, uh, the, the ideas, the resources and solutions, because Waco's really a, a smart, strong, and caring community. And so appreciate the mayor's leadership in setting up the work teams, um, because really what that allows to do is the city staff, um, be intently focused on the public health and public safety emergency that we're, we're in, and allow these community work teams to, to deliver solutions to very important and key issues. And so, Mayor, that's all I had today, and thank, thank you, each council member and community member willing to serve. Uh, we really appreciate it.
Yeah. I want to say a couple more things, then I'll, uh, some, take some comments and questions from the council. Um, you know, Waco has developed over the last, uh, eight to 10 years, a real culture of collaboration. And, uh, the fact that we've got Prosper Waco in place already will help a lot with this in terms of the, the organization that is already there for collaboration. Um, I am amazed, and I know I will continue to be amazed, by the work that volunteers and, uh, community members do. Councilmember Holmes mentioned the, the efforts to, uh, to sew masks for patients, uh, that are, that are coming into the hospitals and, and clinics. Uh, when I first heard that, I thought, you know, "How is that going to work? Nobody, nobody around here knows how to make masks." Well, it turns out, uh, it, it, they do appear to be effective for, uh, for patients. I don't know whether doctors are using these or not, but, uh, they are, um, able to be sterilized and reused, and, uh, it's just a brilliant, uh, effort by, by some of our local volunteers who came up with a really innovative idea and will help us with the shortage for personal protection equipment. So, uh, I've got, uh, Councilmember Meek, I believe, had his hand raised first, and then Mayor Protem Bearfield.
Uh, I just want to thank city staff and the mayor for pulling us together. I think this is a great way to empower our community to come together and create running lanes, and also allow our city staff to work on core city functions. I think like most members of the council, I've gotten a lot of calls saying, "Well, what's the city's plan for this? And what's the city's plan for this? And what's the city's plan for this?" And these, all of these questions that I, or not all of them, but the questions I was just referencing, were not core city functions. It wasn't about public safety or infrastructure or public health. Um, it was about o, other things that the city cares about, and in a normal circumstance, would jump in and be all over. But our city staff currently is working around the clock, um, late into the night and every day to make sure our core city functions are covered well. And so I think this brings organization and clear running lanes, and also, there is the staff liaison that's available, but my hope in this is that it actually takes work away from our city staff and empowers nonprofits and other organizations to rise up and respond, um, to the variety of issues that come up. So homelessness has come up a couple of times today. I think that this is the perfect space for this issue to get tackled and actually relieve some of the pressure from city staff, because we can pull together in organized fashion our community partners, um, to, to, to run with that. So I think this is excellent, and I think it's really going to help us to, um, address the crisis that's happening now, and then also, um, begin a recovery process. And I think that's the, the next phase that we're excited about is, is recovery, and I think this is the infrastructure for that. Um, so commend and, uh, get, get work.
Uh, Mayor Protem Bearfield, and then I see Councilmember Sabido's hand raised, who can be next.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, to echo your point in, in, in people gathering together to make masks, I also want to commend our, um, the beauty industry, um, for the salons and nail shops and all of those kind of groups of people who donated the masks that they had, um, in this effort, because that has happened in this city, um, quickly. So, you know, I'd like the public to commend them for doing that. Um, to echo Councilmember Meek, uh, one of the things I said yesterday was many hands make light work. And as we go through this process in flattening our curve and getting through recovery, you know, I think that these work groups allow our industry leaders, who are the subject matter experts in those four core areas, to do what they do. And, 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 but with the connection to, you know, us, council members, the assigned staff member, you know, that adds a lane for the city then to offer what we can do, what's appropriate for us to do, to make, you know, those industry leaders and those community partners, um, rise up and do everything that they can, you know, that they know how to do. Um, and lead and have proven, been proven leaders in that for a long time with a clear path for what's appropriate for us to do. So I think that this is the best way, and I mean, and I, even post-COVID-19, I think that that's probably going to be a real, real strong, uh, uh, partnership and allegiance for us to have to make, um, pathways for cities and communities to continue to work. I mean, we do and have been, um, working, working well together forever, but I think this is just going to be better, because it drills down even a bit more and, and clearer relationships and clearer pathways and clear communication points. So, um, I'm, I'm, you know, happy to do, and I'm sure all the other council members who are involved are happy to do what we do, because these are things that are important to us and important to our community. So, um, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, thanks for mentioning the, the, the donations by those, uh, salons. I was not aware of that, and that is a great, great example for other citizens of, uh, the sacrifice that, that will be necessary, uh, to, to get through this. So the, the sacrifice and generosity. Uh, Councilmember Sabido.
Yeah, I just, uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, man, this just goes to show the type of collaboration and teamwork that go, that's currently going on in our community and that has been going on. You know, we've always said from the very beginning that together we will get through this, and so this is just another branch of that, that strategically we are planning to see, how do we combat or how do we address these issues that are so important to our constituency? And so, uh, we, we, this is our community, and when I say our community, I mean every single person that lives in our community, not just, uh, city or, or city council or, or city staff, it's all of our communities. And so we know that it's going to take a community effort for us to move forward and to really address the things that need to be addressed, um, as we move forward with COVID-19. And so I just wanted to say how proud I am of our community that are stepping up and just saying, "Hey, where can I help?" Of, of our co-chairs that are stepping up and saying, "You know, I have a lot on my plate, but I understand that this is just as important or even more important, and so I'm going to put all that to the side and really just focus my time and energy on, on making sure that each piece of, of, of area that needs to be covered, that it is covered for the peace of mind for our community." And so I just, once again, want to commend, uh, the strategic work that's taking place, the collaboration that's taking place, and really just, it goes to show you that what a great community that we live in. And so, uh, really thank you to, to everyone who has had a piece, and, and please know that, uh, to the community out there, to the constituents out there, if there's an area that, that you think we're missing, please let us know. Get, get in contact with your local council member. That way, we want to hear you, and we want to know, uh, what concerns you. And so, uh, we open our doors, uh, maybe virtually, maybe not physically, virtually, but we open our doors. That way, we can hear what, what's important to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sabido. Uh, Councilmember Kennard.
Virtual doors, I like that. No, um, I'm, I'm, I'm thankful. I do agree that, uh, from a, just from a city policy standpoint, that our staff needs to be focused on our core operations and making sure that trash is picked up, that infrastructure is good, that the water keeps running. Um, and so I'm, I'm glad that we're taking this step and to provide, uh, hopefully a, kind of a one-place repository for these particular issues when, uh, make sure that, I want to make sure this actually gets out there. So for those in either the health community, know to call me. Uh, for those, you know, dealing with small business concerns or, or support or loans, call Jim. Um, social services, call Andrea for, uh, communication and for just all, all things, uh, questions answered, call Hector. Um, that we, that we are, that we can be the kind of, you know, this, in this time, the effective and consistent communication and making sure that our efforts are as, uh, effective as possible and don't overlap, and that we, we all know kind of what everybody else is doing, I think really is critical. Um, and so I'm, I'm thankful we're taking this step and, uh, and, um, we're, I know, just to speak for all of us, that we're happy to help and we're ready to, ready to do what we can, to, to take some of the burden off the city staff, who, you're right, have been, you know, working tirelessly, um, particularly this past, you know, week and a half, and that, that things just sort of kind of, kind of exploded on us. So, um, I, I appreciate this, and, uh, we're here to help.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennard. Um, you know, the, the city of Waco is really fortunate to have each, each of you serving, uh, as council, council members. You're all great leaders, and you bring great perspectives to this work. And so I, I appreciate you all being willing to, without hesitation, step in and, and take these roles. And I want to say that each of the, the, uh, co-chairs that I talked to, I, I wondered whether they would have time to take this on amidst everything else that they're doing, and they all, uh, without hesitation, instantly said, "Yes, how can I help?" And, uh, so that is, uh, um, it's encouraging, and, 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 uh, I just really appreciate it. Um, if there are no other questions or comments, I don't see any. Um, at this time, we will recess the work session portion of the agenda and convene the business session of the agenda. Uh, we have two resolutions today. The first, uh, is Resolution 2020-214, um, considering a resolution consenting to the continuation of the Declaration of Local Disaster and Public Health Emergency, issued on Tuesday, March 17th, 2020, and amended on Thursday, March 19th, 2020, and Monday, March 23rd, 2020, by Mayor Kyle Dever, and is amended by the City Council of the City of Waco, authorizing additional authority related to a local disaster and public health emergency and provided for a penalty. I'll ask for a motion in a second, and then we'll have an opportunity for discussion. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Sabido, seconded by, uh, Councilmember Kennard. Um, I will open it for a discussion. If you'll raise your hand, I'll try to keep this in a way where we can handle it. Uh, Councilmember Holmes?
Uh, yeah. And, and again, this is the drafting, and this is what I'm, uh, going to be talking about, because I, I support the, the resolution to the two-week, uh, extension. I just want to make sure that there's some clarity in some of these, uh, in some of the, the drafting here. Um, I'm going, and, and Jennifer, you may need to help me out. I'm, uh, I'm going to 10C on, uh, and especially if this relates to, uh, construction. I want it to be clear, I know the 10C, I think, is for construction, like for residential construction and, uh, and really this is our, our, this is Builders Association, uh, is inched out. Uh, I want to make sure that that is, how that, what, what is the intent of the effect there? Uh, the way I read it is that construction jobs continue as long as social distancing The way I read it is that construction jobs continue as long as social distancing is respected. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, sir. The order allows, construction is an essential business.
And Councilmember Holmes, let me just point out, I know there are a lot of questions about this order, and it is, in some ways, in some areas, it's a little bit hard to interpret. We took this order from, primarily, I think it began as a model that began in Santa Clara, California, and has been modified by lots of other states and cities across the country. And it's, if you, if we had had several weeks to craft something, it would probably be a little bit better, but we would still have a jillion questions. And two things about it, one, well, three things. One, that's the purpose of our FAQ, is to try to get consistent interpretation out to the public about this. And secondly, anything that we change would not be effective unless the county also makes a similar change, because their order actually supersedes ours. So we are trying to keep everything as aligned as possible, including, I believe, with the interpretation of it. And so, just as you go through this, just keep that in mind, that we're, and in addition to that, the last thing was, several other cities have now followed our order and are issuing the identical order, or niggardly identical order, in their jurisdictions. I know for a fact that Bryan and College Station used our order yesterday when they implemented their order. So, it's something that, even though it's a little clunky, it's being utilized around the country and is being interpreted fairly consistently. So, I know it, look, I've tried to read it several times to try to decide whether I think somebody falls into a category or out of the category, and I rely on Galen and David to give us interpretation so that we're consistent. So, I'm not trying to limit discussion on this, I just wanted to give you a little context for what we're dealing with. Thanks.
Yep. Yeah, appreciate that. I get it, we're kind of, just moving quickly on this. The second comment I had on ten D, where we're talking about essential government functions as determined by the government, I just want to be able to communicate this as well, and this is sort of a city-controlled mandate. I want to make sure that we're communicating it on the website or however we can, on what we're determining is an essential government function. And I guess, how are we communicating that? Or have we thought about how we're communicating that? The definition basically is whatever we want it to be, as I read it. And again, if this is too early, we haven't thought about that, just say it, just let me know.
No, certainly, we, the manager's office has been in communication with each of our department directors to define essential services. And what I'll say is, we have not delivered necessarily a public-facing document, Councilmember Holmes, but I think that's a great, a great suggestion. Obviously, we've put facility closures online and things of that nature, but I think as we look at defining essential government services, we can do a better job of placing that on our internet as well as social media and get the word out on that. If you'll just grant us a day or so to do that, we can accomplish that.
Great, because that seems to be something that's in our control. I'll go to section 13, and I got cut off, like cell service in District 5 isn't, you know, as good as the rest of you guys. When Mayor Protem, when Mayor Protem Bearfield was talking, I got to the very end of the question, which I want to echo, because I think it's very important, and it goes to section 13. The data that we're gathering, it seems, again, and again, I'm busy with dialogue, it seems that we're only in 13, we're requiring, and again, this is an emergency situation, and we're only requiring reporting of two data points. It seems to me kind of understated, and again, what we're talking about, and maybe I'd give the explanation down. When we can be gathering data that will help us in two weeks or make the decision on, do we do this again, I just think it's critical that we have every possible thing that we can get, that makes sense. Again, I'm talking about objective data points that we can gather. And again, I think we're talking about some of them, positives, negatives, whether they're hospitalized or not, whether there's a fatality, I don't see that one in here. Are we requiring, if there's a death, we need that report, that's not in here, whether it's community spread, whether, what possible source of contagion is, gender, age. I'm a little bit of a philosopher, we're not able to mandate that information gathering. Can somebody help me?
So, Councilmember Holmes, state law only requires the reporting of number of tests performed and number of positive tests. And so, that's what this reflects. Also, we did discuss that in the context of drafting the mayor's order yesterday, I guess we discussed it maybe Sunday. And in consultation with the Public Health District, it was decided from a multitude of factors, including legal, the desire of the Public Health District and others, that these two remain the mandated requirements. I will say, you mentioned whether something's community spread or not, Vedahe and Dr. Gray mentioned that Public Health District's the one that does those kinds of investigations, so we don't need other entities reporting that to us, because that is part of their investigation.
And they are, and they are providing that to us.
And they are providing that to us.
So, Councilmember Holmes, I get what you're asking for, and I don't, I mean, I completely agree with the need for that data. We will talk with the private testing providers and see what information, what additional information we can give, and I'll also ask that we go back and research again, you know, whether there is, whether we could order more and whether there would be a benefit to ordering more. I think it's worth a little deeper look at that. I suspect we may come to the same conclusion on what we can order and what we should order, but we'll double back and double-check that in more depth.
Yeah, because here's my comment, again, to echo Mayor Protem Bearfield, you know, this is an emergency.
Right.
If we need this information, let's ask for it, you know, now. And, let me see, the last comment I had is really to section 14B, and it's giving the city manager, again, this is Wiley, I appreciate you taking the additional burden here on getting, having these sort of extraordinary powers here, but I want to make sure these are limited only to the actions that are later stated in sections 21 and 22. Is that right? I mean, is there a condition on the reference to section 24-127 of our code ordinances?
So, section-
You see what I'm saying, Jennifer?
Yes, so section 24-127 requires the city manager to get council approval for any expenditure over $50,000. If you go to, to section, oh, 22D, it authorizes the city manager to contract for expenditures for budgeted items and emergency expenditures in an amount not to exceed $250,000. So what that means, if you read those two together, is for budgeted items, so items you'll have already approved in the budget, or items related to this COVID-19 pandemic, Wiley can expend and enter into contracts for items up to $250,000 without coming to you all for approval. That does two things, it allows us to be very nimble and quick, but it also reduces the number of agenda items on future agendas, so that we don't have 30-item agendas in the middle of an emergency. So it does those two things. If you'll notice, the very next line talks about how after the cessation of the emergency, and I'm sure Wiley will be doing it as he can through the emergency, but it only requires that after the emergency's over, he tells you what all he's done under these things so that you all are aware. And so, any item, any expenditure or contract where he needs to spend in excess of $250,000, he's still going to, is still going to require council approval. Now, we'll say that, as y'all are aware, in an emergency, under existing state law, he can enter into those contracts and ask y'all to ratify them. So, y'all might see some of those on future council agendas, where he expends $251,000, and at the next council meeting, he's asking y'all to ratify it. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, that clarifies it. Thanks, Jen.
Okay.
So I had.
All right, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Holmes. Very good questions and comments. Any other questions or comments, any further discussion? All right, please poll the council.
Holmes.
Hi.
Meek.
Yes.
Kennard.
Yes.
Sabido.
Yes.
Bearfield.
Yes.
Dever.
Yes, that motion passes unanimously. I want to, again, thank staff for all their work on this, and particularly, I want to thank our city attorney, Jennifer Ritchie. This has been just an incredible load of work on top of everything else that we're always doing. So, thank you, Jennifer, great job, and great work, everybody, on this. Resolution 2020-215, consider a resolution, amending Resolution Number 2020-195 to change the appointment date of Gregory Summers as Fire Chief of the City of Waco, Texas, to March 30, 2020. Wiley, can you give us a little background on that?
Yes, Mayor, Council. I think our thinking on that was, he was willing to come to work earlier, and under the circumstances, we really wanted to get him in. He is somewhat already engaged, but we need him to be officially engaged, and so, we're excited that he's willing and able to show up to work a little bit earlier than what we originally projected, and we're excited to get him in Waco.
Great, great, thank you, Wiley. Is there a motion on that item?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Please poll the council.
Holmes.
Hi.
Meek.
Yes.
Kennard.
Yep.
Sabido.
Yes.
Bearfield.
Yes.
Dever.
Yes, that motion passes unanimously. We don't know when we'll have our next meeting, we have a meeting scheduled for April 7, but we are, under the emergency, we have the ability to call a meeting with an hour's notice. We will try not to do it that quickly if we can help it, but we'll be prepared to call a meeting if we need to. And again, appreciate all of your leadership and the work that staff is doing during this time, and appreciate the patience of our citizens as we all kind of sit through this thing to the extent that we can. There being no further business, we will adjourn the meeting at 10:23 a.m. Thank you.